I only, it's a consent agenda. There's no discussion unless someone brings up something, A, B, C.
That's gonna throw you off so bad.
Then you can choose where to put it.
What do you mean?
Usually after you get it.
I was like, oh my gosh.
Now what will happen is, is they put it. Ask for a first and a second again for all items except for the. Do it first and second. That is the correct thing to do for people to tell you in advance.
I don't really need this right now.
Then you know it in advance, right? Right. Well, no, you still have to have an amendment.
Okay.
But if you know when it's announced, then you can prepare for it. And when you don't know in advance, then, you know. So I just wait, do this, say, you know, it's the, I put the notes in my Word document. And you don't say anything, but there's a question on each item. And then you wait 30 seconds or so, nobody says anything, then you put it through. And then just do a motion. Usually do a motion in a second here.
Yep.
And then if somebody does pull off, at the end, you have to do a vending motion. And then you can put the other item, make a note and put it wherever you want in this one.
Got it. Okay.
Or actually anywhere in the business.
Okay. Got it.
You can talk about it. Very funny. You're doing that smoothly. Mm-hmm. No, I'm not. Go figure.
Oh, so you said it.
Suppose we don't really need this, do we?
I'm coming back more slowly, more slowly.
Yeah, like in the book, it's like something different. There's little like movement that you're just like laughing, you know what I mean? The differences. That went extra out. Yeah.
Can we go back? Is that actually?
Pretty fast, yeah.
There's always a reason to.
Oh, my stupid email. A verification code all the time.
I was gonna ask tech, I mean, it's pretty good off the road.
They told me you can't.
You have to have that last step.
It's part of their, their little system. It's annoying, because like here I am, I already turned my phone off. And now I gotta go find my verification code. Forgot my coffee at home, so my daughter's gonna bring it over. It's like you can't have my meeting without my coffee. You don't get too comfy, you guys might be moving.
What's that?
You guys could be moving, who knows? Don't get too comfy. Sometimes people switch. I don't know. You could be fine. Which?
Oh, yeah.
We, yeah. Might not either.
I agree. Probably not with my back facing.
And I don't know, I've never sat over there, but over here, it gets really cold because of that door. It's not like you feel a draft or anything, it's just colder. I've sat up here and shivered before. That's what you get when you have an old bowling alley here, five three.
That's true.
There's drafts everywhere.
I didn't know that at all.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But over there, it's like, I whatever.
Welcome, everyone, to the 2025 Organizational Meeting of the Board of Education for Prior Lake Savagery Schools. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All board members are present, and first order on the agenda, first item on the agenda is to have the ceremonial oath of office. All newly elected and reelected board members will recite the oath by the vice, given by the vice chair, and the official oath and acceptance documents were already signed by all reelected and newly elected board members prior to this meeting.
Hope you guys will follow me. It is an honor that you were elected to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being both morally and legally responsible for equitable, quality education of every student in the district. Carrying out this responsibility, you will be asked to fulfill the roles of vision, structure, accountability, and advocacy. Providing vision, the school board with extensive participation of the community, envisions the community's educational future, and then formulates the goals, defines the outcomes, and sets the course for the public schools. To achieve this vision, the board establishes a structure and creates an environment designed to ensure all students the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. Because of the board, we must be accountable to the community. We must ensure a continuous assessment of student achievement in all conditions affecting the education of children, of our children. As board members, we serve as education's key advocates on behalf of students and our community schools to advance the vision of our schools. Furthermore, we must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills and knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, I hereby ask you to publicly affirm your commitment to the oath of office. After me and raise your right hand. Where that I will support.
Where that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And of this state.
And of the state.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
And that I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of the Office of School Board.
The duties of the Office of School Board.
Member of Independent School District 719.
Member of Independent School District 719.
The best of my judgment and ability.
Best of my judgment and ability.
Congrats.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
By Director White.
Second.
By Director Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes seven zero. Next item on the agenda is the election of chair. So I'm gonna call for nominations. So the first question is, are there any nominations for the Office of School Board Chair for 2025?
I'd like to nominate Director White for chair.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Director Dan White is the only candidate nominated for the Office of Chair for the School Board for 2025, and I hereby declare him to be elected by acclamation and direct the acting clerk to record the minutes.
Well, thank you, everyone. I do appreciate that. We will move on to the next election, the next two offices. I will now open up nominations for the Office of Vice Chair.
I nominate Amy Boyan.
The chair recognizes Amy Boyan has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I nominate Director Johnson.
The chair recognizes Director Johnson has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations for Vice Chair. This will require a roll call vote, as we have two candidates. So I will call on you individually, starting on this end of the table, and just indicate your preference for the position of Vice Chair. Director Olsted.
Director Boyan.
Director Johnson.
Myself.
Director Mason.
Director Johnson.
Director Boyan.
Myself.
Director Franz.
Director Boyan.
Director Atkinson.
Director Johnson.
I will vote for Director Boyan. And Director Boyan receiving four votes, the, who has been elected Vice Chair for 2025. Next on the agenda is the nominations for Treasurer. The chair will now accept nominations for Treasurer for 2025. Are there any nominations for Treasurer?
I nominate Director Olsted.
The chair recognizes Director Olsted is being nominated. Any other nominations for Treasurer?
I would like to nominate Director Atkinson.
Chair recognizes Director Atkinson is being nominated for Treasurer. Are there any other nominations for Treasurer? Hearing none, I declare those nominations closed, and we will follow the same protocol as previously. Indicate your preference. Director Olsted.
Myself.
Director Johnson.
Director Atkinson.
Director Mason.
Director Atkinson.
Vice Chair Boyan.
Director Olsted.
Director Franz.
Director Olsted.
Director Atkinson.
Myself.
The chair votes for Director Atkinson. And Director Atkinson, receiving the majority of the votes, is elected Treasurer for the 2025 calendar year. At this time, I would suggest a real short recess, so that people can switch places and Martha can do what needs to be done for us. So we are in recess. I think if we can get back here by Martha's quarter two, good enough.
So take that one.
All right, we'll reconvene at five forty-five. We will begin again. Moving on to the consent agenda. These are routine in nature and are tradition at the organizational meetings. So the consent agenda tonight will consist of designation of depositories for school district funds, authorizing the use of facsimile signatures for payroll and voucher checks, designating the official school district legal posting site, naming the schools' district financial consultants and legal counsel, the district auditing firm, the assistant board clerk, the authorization of persons to lease and purchase and contract for goods and services that are within our budget, designating the schools' special education director, district LEA and data practices compliance officer, delegating the authority to make electronic transfers, directing administration to post notifications, and designation of the identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System. I would entertain a motion at this time to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So made.
By Director Boyan, is there a second?
Second.
By Director Olsted. Hearing discussion.
I would like to pull, I would like to pull H from the consent agenda for further discussion.
And H is... Okay, we'll be pulling H, and I'll put that back in right before number eight, if that's okay with everybody. So then can I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So made.
By Director Atkinson.
Second.
By Director Olsted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. And then we'll just go right in back into letter H. The authorization of persons to lease, purchase, and contract for goods and services within the budget is their discussion.
Yes, thank you for pulling that item up. The reason that I wanted to bring this up is because particularly last year, we've been challenged to bring a balanced budget to our community. In fact, we overspent our budget by $70 million. And I feel that as a board, I think we need to do a better job of putting guardrails in place in order to ensure that we are operating within our means. And so I think, you know, I don't know if it is changing the language within this authorization or if it's the dollar amount or what it may be, but I think we need to do, I think we, I would just like to open up for discussion as far as if anything needs to change, because what we've been doing currently is not, is not working.
This, to me, seems, I have heard from both board members and some administration that maybe this might need some tweaking, maybe a slightly different approach to how we do it. I would suggest if we want to discuss this, because this could be pretty involved in how it would be, would end up, would be to bring it to a study session sometime to discuss whether or not we want to change anything, the whole thing, parts of it. I think that would probably be the way to go, because that could be a pretty involved discussion that's gonna need, we're gonna need the information from Director Fredrickson and others to probably do this right. So would I be mistaken in saying that we could approve H tonight and then modify it at a later date? Is that?
I would suggest we do a thumbs up at the, at the next study session. And, and then schedule it for that study session, whatever one is in order, based upon the preparation for, from Director Fredrickson for the discussion.
Okay, that seems like, that's reasonable. All right. So then I will entertain a motion to approve H.
So made.
By Director Olsted, second. By Director Mason. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Moving on to number eight, 2025 Board Compensation is a recommendation of the chair to have the board compensation for 2025 remain unchanged from 2024. And I'll entertain a motion to approve compensation as listed.
So made.
By Director Atkinson.
Second.
By Director Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. And you just received the board committee assignments for 2025. There was one slight change that was, that will be brought forward to you on the Teaching and Learning Committee. We will be, if it's the will of the board, replacing Lisa Atkinson with Jess Olsted. There was obviously some question as who was gonna end up where, and this way we are all at least serving on, on the one committee. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the committee assignments for 2025.
So made.
By Director Franz, second.
Second.
By Director Boyan. Any further discussion?
Is that a question?
Sure.
The district-wide advisory council committees, I just want to make sure I don't, I'm not assigned to any, and I just, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was how it's intended.
No, no, that was the change that he just stated.
The, sorry, page two, the advisory committees.
Yeah, and I would say I'm not on any external agencies either. External.
Yeah, early learning, you're on early learning.
Except for the bottom ones, I'm not on the external agencies.
Okay.
Director Olsted, do you, would you agree to accept this and then discuss it with the chair at a later time?
Totally fine, yes. I just wanted to make, make sure.
Yeah, if there's any questions regarding any of the committee assignments moving forward, feel free just to reach out and we'll, we'll work it out.
No problem.
Director White, I have a question. Is, is now a time to propose additional committees that we could recommend as being part of our work to support the work of our board? Or would it be better to have that brought up at a study session?
I would think if there, are you talking like an ad hoc type of committee?
Correct.
Okay. I would say that if it's the will of the board, we could also put that on a future study session, as long as it's not time sensitive to, you know, something has to be done by the end of January, anything, if we have some time. That would be a reasonable discussion for the board to have, if we feel like there's maybe a committee for, instance, negotiations or whatever it would be.
Right.
I would think the smart thing would be to bring it before a study session.
At a study session, then make that recommendation, get the thumbs up or whatever for the board, and then place it on the appropriate meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you.
I'll make sure, I'll make a note of that and make sure that that happens in the near future. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table for committee assignments. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And then number 10, discussion of meeting and procedures format. Is there any discussion that any board member has around the format or way we do business on the agenda moving forward for 2025?
Well, I think that, I think personally, the discussion of our meeting and procedures format is, is much more, could be a much more robust conversation. And I think it leads to a conversation of like, how do we look at developing a board handbook is something that comes to mind? And within that board handbook, it's the 200 serious policies, it's our communication protocols, perhaps how we do Laker Pride within our meetings. One thing that I'd like to talk about, and again, I think this becomes more of a bigger, broader board conversation, is how we do our study sessions, because I've heard a lot of conversation about that people can't hear us. We sit to the, you know, we sit to the back of the audience. And so I think that if it's possible to have a more robust conversation around that, about, around that, I would like to see, if it's a board retreat or whatever it might be.
Well, you know that when it comes to the actual agenda, and I had, I asked this question tonight, if for instance, there's a top heavy agenda that would prevent Laker Pride from happening early on in the evening, we have the authority to move that around as we see fit, if it makes sense, so that we don't have students waiting, you know, for an hour out there to come and get their certificate. So that part, I think we can, just to, I would suggest just working meeting to meeting on that. I'll work with Dr. Thomas to make sure that, that it's efficient in that way. But your broader point, again, we can discuss a number of things at an upcoming study session that, that might make sense. Just to, so we're all on the same page moving forward, and I would have no problem with that, if that's fine with the board.
This study session, that's appropriate place to bring up this.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else regarding the procedures? All right. And then kind of to your point, Director Atkinson, number 11 is the in-service discussion. I have had conversations with all of you regarding my desire that we cobble together some kind of a retreat earlier in the year as opposed to later, with the intent to go over our 200 operating policies and kind of make sure that we clean up everything that's maybe slightly outdated, agree on, you know, what, what these policies say and mean, and then, and then commit to adhering to them moving forward. That, in my mind, does lead to something like us discussing some kind of a board handbook that we could develop moving forward. Dr. Thomas and I have talked about that possibility as well, so. For that particular retreat, for lack of a better word, my, my, my thought is, and in the past, I've found that it works the best if we can find a Saturday morning to, to do this. You're fresher in the morning. I know that you, board members with, with athletes that are younger, weekends have been spoken for many months in advance. I remember the days. But my desire would be by the end of February, if we could, if you guys could just look at your calendars and see if there's a possibility that we could do an eight to noon, nine to one-ish type thing. I don't think it should take 11 and a half hours to do this. I think we should build a, to, to get through this and at least move forward with the possibility of something like a handbook and get us all on the same page moving forward. So other than that, are there any other discussion around in-service for the year?
The only thing that I would ask is that the handbook that does exist with all that information in there be handed out to the current board members as well as the policies, so they can say what's going to change in advance.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Director White, we, and tell me if I might be, might have missed this, but I'd like to propose maybe adding in, oh my gosh, Dr. Thomas, you have, oh, sorry, I just remembered the name, apologize. A couple town halls, maybe one a quarter for the school board to go out into the public and to engage with the public instead of only having our open forum here throughout the year. If we can either put that in a study session to talk about it, maybe put it, bring it into the, the thing you were talking about, the retreat at some point, I think that would be a good idea to go out to the community a little more.
Is that in addition to the current financial town halls that do exist? With Dr. Thomas meeting with members of the public?
That would be the school board.
The school board do a town hall?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, sorry, thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely.
I think based on our strategic plan and based on community engagement, I, I support that idea. I think it's a great way to, we, we had a lot of success during our strategic planning process, meeting with our community, and since we don't have something like that on the calendar this year, I think it's a great way to engage with our community. And what the format looks like, I guess we can talk about that as we go forward, whether it's at that board retreat or whatever, but I would be supportive of that.
I would certainly write it down, and we can begin to move in that direction, if that's the will of the board, starting with coming up with some dates, or maybe I'll be together with Dr. Thomas and the rest of you and see how that might look, how often we might want to do it, where, all those kinds of things. So that's again, a discussion that's probably more in-depth than we can go through tonight, but it's on the list, and I will... and I will pledge to not forget it. Anything else regarding in-service? Okay, we've reached the end of the agenda. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the.
We need to vote on the in-service.
Oh, we do need to vote on that, you're right, sorry.
It's okay.
Uh, I will entertain a motion then.
So made.
By Director Franz.
Second.
By Director Olsted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
So made.
By Director Franz.
Second.
By Director Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned. Can we take?
Do you want to wait until we go into the regular board meeting?
I was gonna say, can we take another five? And we'll get back here at 6:06. Sound good?
Sounds great.